363 Arlington Street, Acton, Mass. 01720. The documentation concerning this hearing can be inspected before the public hearing at the Town Manager's office during normal business hours. Sam Denning from Town Council will conduct the rest of the meeting.
Thank you. This hearing is being conducted pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 157, the nuisance or dangerous dog statute. This statute gives the Board the authority upon receipt of a complaint to determine whether a dog is dangerous, meaning that it has caused injury by attacking a person or animal without justification, or that it behaves in a way that would cause a reasonable person to believe that it poses an unjustifiable threat of physical injury. The Board will hear under oath from witnesses who can testify to this issue, in particular to the events that took place on May 4th, 2019, involving the dog Winston in this case. If, after hearing the testimony and taking evidence, the Board declares Winston a dangerous dog, it will issue an order prescribing a remedy that may include, among other options, certain restraints, muzzling, or euthanasia should the circumstances warrant. The Board's decision will be memorialized in a written decision issued shortly after the hearing. Any order of this Board may be appealed to the District Court. In terms of the process that this hearing will -- that will be used to conduct this hearing, the Board will first hear from witnesses and receive evidence from the complaining party and victim in this case, and then will hear from the dog owner, including any witnesses or evidence that the dog owner may wish to present. In order to provide testimony, all witnesses must be sworn under oath, given by Lisa Tommo, the Board Executive Assistant. After all factual evidence is provided, the Board will close the public hearing. Town Council's office will then provide a description of the legal definitions and standards that apply to the issues for determining whether the dog is a dangerous dog. No other information will be taken by the Board after this point. The Board will then deliberate on its determination. It may take two or more votes, first being whether the dog is a dangerous dog as defined by statute, and second, if so, what the remedy should be to ensure public safety. With that, we'll hear first from the complainant, the complainant's side of this case. First, we'll hear from Nelba Maldonado. And Ms. Tommo, will you swear the witness in?
Um, well, I'll --
Sorry to clarify that. Anyone who will be testifying today, please stand, and we'll swear everyone in at once. So listen to the instructions, answer the oath when it's given, and then if anyone else is testifying at any point, we can add that at that point.
Can you swear to her? The whole truth, the whole truth, because everybody's true comes first.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Board. Thank you for hearing this matter tonight. According to the Boxborough Police and Boxborough ACO, Phil Conkle described a vicious unprovoked attack by Winston while he was walking on conservation land in Boxborough on 5/4 of 19. After the initial attack, the dog continued to bite Phil until the owner intervened and restrained Winston. The severe bite to Mr. Conkle's hand and wrist took over 30 sutures to close, in addition to bite wounds to his upper leg. Phil stated to Mr. Palmer that the dog was relentless in his attack, and he can see the bones in his wrist after the attack. I'd like to provide you with a couple of photos from the attack. One's the -- at the hospital room, and then the other ones you'll see are the sutures after, which is pretty severe. On May 4th, 2019, Tac Palmer, ACO of Acton, was contacted by Phyllis Tower, the Boxborough ACO, regarding a dog bite that just occurred in her town on conservation land. The biting dog is owned by Paige Yvette of 363 Arlington Street in Acton. The dog was described as a male pit bull type mix named Winston. According to our town licensing records, Winston is a gray-tan pit bull mix, born in December of 2017. He's currently licensed in Acton for 2019, and his rabies expires on 5/24 of 19. According to Winston's owner, Paige Yvette, he has a prior bite history from Michigan. This statement was made by the owner to Officer Chris Lowney of the Boxborough Police Department, Phyllis Tower, the Boxborough ACO, and to Tac Palmer, Acton ACO. Because what was described to Mr. Palmer by Phil Conkle and what was reported by the Boxborough Police and Animal Control, both Mr. Palmer and myself felt it was imperative to request a dangerous dog hearing from the Acton Police Chief Rich Borrows to assure that Winston will not bite again. The public safety is at risk due to Ms. Yvette's negligence. Vet records indicate that when working with Winston, to go slowly and muzzle for all procedures. On 2/7 of 19, it indicates that Winston has a bite history in Michigan, and his anxiety is escalating, and the owner would like to try Prozac for his behavior. The vet and owner agreed that Winston should see a behaviorist. On a letter dating March 14, 2019, from Pet Behavior Consultations diagnosed presenting complaint of biting dogs and a person, Winston was diagnosed with protective and fear-induced aggression. The treatment plan for Winston was to buy a muzzle, train Winston to wear a muzzle, and they provided a website the owner can go on and train herself to train her dog to wear the muzzle, 20mg of fluoxetine daily, which is an anxiety medicine, and to keep Winston on a leash until he accepts the muzzle. I'll remind the Chairman and Board, this evaluation and diagnosis was before the vicious and unprovoked attack on Mr. Conkle. On June 8th, 2019, Winston was again evaluated by Dr. Amy Martyr. It states Winston showed signs of fear during appointment, and Ms. Yvette then muzzled him without resistance, and Winston wore the muzzle the rest of the appointment. This document admits that Winston has never received formal dog training. The recommendations given on this date were to have Winston muzzled on all walks and to take Winston to a dog trainer. If Ms. Yvette took the advice of the Office of the Pet Behavior Consultations when Winston was first evaluated and diagnosed in March, Mr. Conkle would never have been viciously attacked in this manner. Winston is a public safety threat to our community and our children. According to the evidence before you, Winston fits all criteria according to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 157, to be deemed a dangerous dog. Thank you.
Does any member of the Board have questions for Ms. Maldonado?
Excuse me a second. Jeremy Cohen, Boston Dog Lawyers, representing the pet owners. I'm not asking you a question across the dinnery, but did you just read someone's statement in the last part? What was that, your statement?
At this --
I just wanted to --
Sorry.
Was that her statement? Did she just read it again?
And that's something that the Board members can follow up with, and I would encourage you during the victim -- during the dog owner's portion of the hearing, to raise that concern for the Board members to follow up. But all of the conversation, all of the questioning through this matter is going to go through the Board, not directly to -- from members of the public.
Can you just tell me what she just read from? Was that her own statement?
Sir, that --
Someone else's?
Sir, again, that's going to be something that you can address with the Board.
The name? Well, the name?
That will be something that you can address with the Board. Thank you. So I would now ask if any members of the Board have any questions.
Assuming we find that this is a dangerous dog, do you have a recommendation about what ought to happen?
Yes.
Okay, can we have that?
Yep. I actually made copies, if I can find it in here. So if you could just pass that down.
And if you could describe the document that you're passing to the members of the Board?
It is basically a copy of Mass. General Law 140, 157, if the dog was deemed a dangerous dog. Do you have an additional copy?
Just to clarify, I believe the question was what the exact recommendation would be?
Yeah.
Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Well, there's a whole range of options here. Do you have a recommendation as to a particular?
The major thing would be that the dog would need to be muzzled at all times, once it's left the property, or restrained in the backyard as the dog can't get out. And also that the dog would always have to have a leash no larger than three feet, and be on a leash and be muzzled at all times off the property. That the owner provide proof of insurance of not less than $100,000, insuring the owner or keeper against any claim lost or damage or injury to persons or domestic animals or property resulting from acts of said dog. I also included a clause that no one under the age of 18 be permitted to be responsible for taking care of the dog or walking the dog. And if because of owner negligence, they happen to be out on conservation land again without a muzzle, the dog running free, not being on a leash, or any other circumstance that that dog gets out and bites again, the owner or keeper shall be ordered to immediately surrender said dog. The owner shall give up all rights to Winston. The dog will be held for a 10-day quarantine and then humanely euthanized by a licensed vet. The owner or keeper of dog shall reimburse the city or town for all reasonable costs incurred for the house and care of such dog during its impoundment and all costs incurred for euthanasia. All funds recovered by the municipality under this shall be transferred to the organization or entity of handling the dog. So basically, the owner is liable for any expense that the dog incurs.
So ma'am, if I understand correctly, it's -- your recommendation is one through five inclusive, and then your two additional points?
Correct.
Are there any other questions at this time?
Yes, was there any reason given in the recent attack as to why the dog was off-leash since it had a history of biting previously?
From what I gather from Animal Control Officer Tac Palmer, I believe he said Ms. Paige Yvette thought that the problem had resolved, and she didn't think there was any other issues, and also that she would take the dog to land where she knew not a lot of people were around. That way, he can run free and get exercise.
Other questions at this time? Okay, thank you, Ms. Maldonado. The Board also received a statement from Phyllis Tower, Animal Control Officer for Box -- for the town of Boxborough. I believe that was distributed to the Board as well as to Council for the dog owners this morning. I'd like to read that statement for the record. States, this is again Phyllis Tower, the Boxborough Regional Animal Control Officer, states, "On Saturday, May 4th, 2019, just before 10:00 a.m., I, Phyllis Tower, was dispatched to respond to the Boxborough Police Station for a past dog bite incident. When I arrived at the station, Officer Gath was outside in front of the police station with the dog's owner, Paige Yvette, who was biting -- who was -- who was the biting dog. The victim, Philip Conkle, and his wife were in the station lobby. Conkle resides in Boxborough and was being treated by paramedics. I spoke with Paige Yvette of Acton, excuse me. Ms. Yvette explained she was walking her dogs off-leash at Patch Hill off of Liberty Square Road in Boxborough when they came across Conkle. Both dogs, the pit bull mix and the Australian Shepherd, started barking and running towards Conkle. Yvette stated that the pit bull mix, named Winston, has a previous bite history out of state. Yvette stated that the dog was on medication, had been seen by a veterinarian, and has used a trainer trying to correct the dog from biting people. Yvette stated that she did use a muzzle in the past, but it didn't fit right and hurt the dog. I suggested she go to a specialty dog supply store and have the dog fitted for the correct muzzle. Yvette stated that she uses Shepherd Veterinary in Boxborough. I told Yvette that if she returned to Boxborough to walk her dogs, she needed to keep them on leash since she was not able to control them. I went into the lobby where Officer Gath had gone to ask if he was done speaking with Yvette, and Yvette left at that time. I went inside the lobby, finding Conkle and his wife speaking with Officer Lowney. Conkle stated he was out on the Patch Hill Trails off of Liberty Square Road in Boxborough, and he saw the woman and the two unleashed dogs approaching. The dogs were quite a distance from the owner. Conkle stated he waved his hand to let her know that he was up ahead. The two dogs started barking and running toward him. Conkle was attacked by the pit bull mix, Winston. I finished speaking with Conkle when his wife suggested they get going to Emergency -- to Emerson Emergency Room. As soon as we left the police station, I reached out to Acton Animal Inspector Tac Palmer to let him know what had happened, as the dogs live and are registered in Acton. I confirmed that the biting dog was up to date with his rabies vaccination. The dog will need to be quarantined by Mr. Palmer. When the bite report arrived at dispatch, I had the Police Chief Secretary Andrea Veros fax it to Mr. Palmer, the Acton. Today, Thursday, May 9th, a letter will be mailed to Yvette stating that if her dogs are in Boxborough, they must be leashed and muzzled. Also included in the mailing will be a copy of the bylaws and a written citation. Phyllis Tower, Boxborough Regional Animal Control." Also submitted by Ms. Tower was a copy of that letter, which summer -- which is summarized at the end of this statement. Now, I'd like to ask if the victim, Philip Conkle, or his representative would like to speak, would like to provide testimony?
Yes.
If you can come up to the mic. And just to be sure, you were sworn in earlier.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I was, yeah. So I worked really hard to try to figure out why this happened, and I do want to give credit to the owner for being so forthcoming with the information about what happened. And, you know, the dog had me on the ground, and my only option left when I looked up was to see her and say, you know, hurry, get him on leash. And she did, and she pulled him off. And I looked at her, and I had no idea who she was or who any of these people or dogs or animals were, and I just looked at her and said, "You need to be accountable." And she agreed, and she has been. She's been very accountable. She provided the information, and she should be, you know, credited for that. But I walk in this area all the time. It's my stomping ground. I'm very comfortable in there. I know it backwards and forwards. I've never seen anything like this, and it occurred completely out of nowhere, unprovoked. I feel it's important that, given, you know, that she may have a neighbor with young kids or somebody else may, you know, have a similar situation, that they not have what happened to me. But I, you know, I really appreciate the work that the Animal Control Officers have done. Good job. Appreciate it.
And sir, if you could just stay for one minute, just to see if anyone, any members of the Board have any questions?
What would you think is a remedy here, sir?
I think there's a -- the number one problem here is I see irresponsibility, and I need the owner to be accountable for that. And I question whether there will be follow-through, given her knowledge of the behavior of the animal, but I think the animal needs to be restrained in a really maximum way, you know, in an area of her yard, in public with a muzzle. I don't want to see it with a basket muzzle in conservation land. Yeah, I need -- my remedy would be that it not leave the property, and that it needs to be restrained in a confined space. You know, I understand there's a new neighbor with several young kids, and if for some reason the dog does escape, you know, that would be tragic. Or get out, I mean. So, yeah, some sort of a restraint to her property.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Conkle.
Yeah?
Is there anyone else from law enforcement or the complainant's side that wishes to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Phil's wife.
If you'd like to give a statement, just come up to the mic. And if you could just identify yourself by name, so we have that for the record.
My name's Deb Conkle. I'm Phil Conkle's wife. I've known Phil for 41 years, and we've been married for 35. We love animals, we love nature, and we've lived in Boxborough for over 20 years. I wasn't prepared to speak, and what I want you to know is, when I finally arrived where Phil was coming out of the woods so we could go to the police station, what he said to me was, "What if this was a seven-year-old girl? What if this was a family? Deb, what if you were with me?" I am so grateful that my husband is alive, and that is my message. Then we found out that the dog had a history. It's not the animal's fault. We take care of our animals, and we responsibly care for them, and when they have a disposition, one has to take the responsibility. My husband was more concerned about someone else at that moment than himself, and he took the time to go to the police station so that no one else would have to go through this. These woods are across from our home, and he enjoys being in the woods, or he used to. My husband is a very fit person, an outdoorsman like myself. We're both in our 60s, and there is not just a physical problem that exists. We both are self-employed, so he has to work with his hands. We both enjoy recreation. He can't do a lot of the things that he enjoys, but again, I want to say, he's alive, and I have to just fall back to what I'm very grateful for. We don't want this to happen to anyone. We don't want animals to be put down. I think of all that I heard today, that upsets me the most, because I've had time to process how grateful I feel about my husband. But it's, if this ever could happen again, we have an opportunity to do something about it. So if you were to ask me how I feel, please, respect the dog's disposition, keep it muzzled if this dog is given the opportunity to survive. Keep it safe in your house or in a place with a muzzle outside, and thank you for listening to both of us.
Does any member of the Board have any questions? Thank you, ma'am. This time, is there anyone else wishing to speak from the complainant's side? Okay, seeing nobody, we would turn to the dog owners, the dog owner or representative. If whoever would first like to speak could just identify themselves at the mic.
My name is Jeremy Cohen. My firm is Boston Dog Lawyers, and I represent responsible pet owners. In a minute, you'll hear from my client. They're being very reasonable. This was, this was a bite that shouldn't have happened, and I appreciate the kind words they've said about Paige, and I just want to tell you some of the things that we're doing to prevent this from happening again. The goal is, for any of us who are dog owners, you're better tomorrow than you are today. So, yeah, Paige had done something. She had gone to a behaviorist who recommended a trainer, and -- but there wasn't consistency, and this shouldn't have happened, Mr. Conkle. So here's some of the things that she's done, in addition to what he's told you. She is a pretty responsible person, and this is pretty troubling to her. So they had two dogs, Molly and Winston. They got them the same week. These dogs slept together every night, but Molly's the alarmist, and Winston is the responder, and Mr. Conkle witnessed it that day. Molly was the one barking, and Winston was the one who bit him. So she has removed Molly from her ownership. She's placed her with a relative who has better resources, time, yard, skills to handle Molly, so she has separated the two dogs, and Molly's not returning. So what that means is now the alarmist is gone, which means Winston should be less on guard to now respond to these triggers. She's also, and I've submitted this previously, but I'm happy to do it again with hard copy. She's engaged. Olympia Kennels in New Hampshire, she's had Winston evaluated there, and they are sending their dog there for a three-week board and train, because we heard how Winston wasn't trained earlier. And so now, this Olympia Kennels, they don't guarantee it, but pretty close, that they're going to fix this dog to not respond to triggers. We know that he has anxiety, that's why he's taking some medication. In addition, Paige is on board with a muzzle, and in these cases, it's very rare to find an owner who says, "I will put a muzzle on my dog." So I'm confident in that, and I know she's been working with him so that Winston is comfortable with the muzzle. Right when it happened, she immediately called her insurance company, and adjuster came down, so there is insurance in place for this. Again, she's engaged in helping the Conkle's in preventing this from happening again. I do appreciate that there were no recommendations here to euthanize the dog, and that it sounds as though the recommendations were to, let's try to give this dog another chance, but not just by parking it in the yard, though. This, between the muzzle, the right restraint, three-foot leash, no more teammate in Molly, and now there's a team working with Winston at home. It's Mr. Ethel, their daughter. So it's a three-person team instead of a one-person, take care of two dogs, and that -- so that's really changed the management of the dog and will improve the management of the dog. the management of the dog, and will improve the management of the dog. She, the dog has been to a behaviorist twice, just to be assessed. And I know this with Amy Martyr. I'm sure at some point after the board and train, and after whatever they learn up there is implemented here, the dog will go back to Amy Martyr. And the goal is obviously to see improvement. And I really think if this dog hasn't improved, Amy Martyr, I know she will tell us. And for those of you who don't know her, she is the dog behaviorist, one of the top three in the state. And she recognizes that Winston has a problem. But she also believes separating them now, so it's not a team, is going to help quite a bit. And while, when you engage in deliberations, I promise you, I understand I have no role in that. But I do have one issue with the recommendations. And that is, after number five, the idea that if Winston bites again, he should be immediately, essentially immediately put down. That is not part of Chapter 140, 157. And I believe you could seize the dog, but you would still have to hold a hearing. Because anytime you want to deprive somebody of their property, they have to have due process. And my concern is, if, if, it sounded to me that if Winston's even seen off-leash once, that that's it. He can be euthanized. And I just think a hearing would be necessary, just like this, to just understand the facts. And then it could be very likely that Winston, if Winston does something that has to be put down, then some dogs have to be put down. But that scares me, that last part. Everything else, including the muzzle, we're on board with. Not that you need us to agree with whatever order you put in, but if the order includes that essentially an automatic euthanasia, I would have to advise my clients that we would have to appeal that. Because I don't see in the law that, that that's a possibility. At this point, I just want to bring up Mr. Edditt, so he can testify to some of the things that I've set the stage for. My assumption is, well, does anybody have a question for me?
So, sir, you're amenable to recommendations one through five, and, and the under-18 restriction?
Yes.
And then the other one you're not is the surrendering of Winston?
If there was a... The surrendering is okay, but the, I believe it says so, and then be humanely euthanized.
And then he would be quarantined and put down.
Yeah. Because the only, the reason for the quarantine is make sure he doesn't have rabies. And then that's the 10-day period, and then to put him down. That's the part that I have a problem with, just because I don't think it's an option. It is not an option under 140, 157 for the hearing authority. And rather than bring it up later, I appreciate the opportunity to bring it up now. It is very unusual that I have a client who says, "I'm good" for one through five. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie? Are there any other... One second, Mr. Cohen. Are there any other questions for Mr. Cohen before we hear from the dog owners? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, sir, if you could just identify yourself for the record, for us.
Yeah, my name is Charles Edditt. I usually go by Charlie. And I'm also Winston's owner, along with my wife Paige.
If it's okay, do you mind if I just prompt him with a few questions, two questions to bring out the testimony?
Yeah, that should be okay.
You heard what I had to say about the measures of employment. Is it true that you are not saying you weren't...
Excuse me, can you do a job?
Yes. Okay.
Can you tell us, are you now more engaged with the management of Winston than you were before?
Oh, yeah, certainly. You know, I think, you know, before this happened, we had, Paige was really doing it kind of all on her own. We had visits to the behaviorist, and I was assumed I could let that run its course. I think, obviously, this incident happened that revealed that we had made a mistake in how we've been approaching this. It's also, I think, it's worth pointing out that Winston's changed a fair amount because of changing the scene in our house with Molly being gone. So he, you know, before, he was really focused on Molly, and always wanting to play with her, always wanted to do whatever it was, or she was the leader. And now that she's not there, she's turning to us, and especially to me, as a person to be involved with.
Okay. And can you tell everybody what that is?
Well, that's the muzzle that we've been training Winston to use.
Okay.
And he's learned to like it more.
Okay. And this was recommended to you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. As far as the training in New Hampshire, can you just elaborate and confirm what I talked about?
Yeah. So we, so Paige learned about the place in New Hampshire earlier this week, just the first time it's come up. Obviously, we would have loved to have learned about it sooner, but it just, it didn't happen. And so now that we found out about this place, she immediately drove up there, had the dog evaluated by the guy who is there, whom she described as a very much in-charge person, someone who's worked with dogs for many, many years, and who seemed very confident that his program would, would help Winston adjust. And so we've booked him for the earliest possible session we could get, which is next week.
And is it, for how many weeks?
It's a three-week program.
Okay. And he stays there?
Yeah, he's there the whole time.
Okay.
I imagine that after he's done, we'll have plenty of work to do on our own.
And you're committed with your team now to work on that?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm, I'm pretty confident that, that we can improve Winston's behavior, and certainly that we can keep the community safe. I really don't, I think he is not a particularly difficult dog to, you know, when he's on a leash, when he's there. He's quite easy to handle when I've taken him on walks.
Okay. Last question I have is, I, I'm, I think it's wise, nobody under 18 should walk the dog. And I wish to accept that. But how old is your daughter, just to confirm for everybody, in case they see her walking the dog?
Yeah. Toby is 19 years old, actually. She just turned 19.
Okay. Thank you. Unless you have other questions.
Do you have questions for me?
Do any board members have questions?
Can you describe how Winston's confined on your property outside of your house?
Yeah. Her house has a pool, so we're required, because of the pool, to have a high fence around the property in the backyard. So we have, in addition to the fence, we've put a more or less permanent lock on the gate that's there. So it's actually, nobody's been going in and out of the backyard, except through the house, since May, early, May 4th, since the incident happened.
Did I see that the dog was born in, that Winston was born in 2017? So he's only, is that, is he still a puppy?
He's definitely a, I mean, I would describe him as a teenager now. And I, you know, he's learning.
Okay. And is he, how much does he weigh now?
He weighs, oh, he's full grown. I mean, he hasn't grown any for months. But he weighs about 55 pounds, I think.
And did I see that Paige walks him five miles a day? Is that what I saw?
She did walk him pretty far. Most days, she would go for long walks around the conservation land. Obviously, we haven't been able to do that since, since May 4th. And I think the length of his walks is going to have to be curtailed because of being on the leash. Paige is 59 herself, so I'm not sure if she can manage the five miles. But she's definitely looks at her pedometer, and she's often over 10,000 steps a day. And most of that is the dog walk.
Okay. And, and when you get the dog back from this behavioral center, do they provide you with follow-up training? Or would you agree to a condition that you would continue to take the dog to behavioral training? I mean, I'm not sure that these kind of issues can be corrected with a three-week stay.
Yeah, sure. Right. I'm, you know, the way this has been described to us is like it's boot camp, not that it's like, and so you make, you know, you make a big change by, you know, a sort of intensive program. But, you know, wouldn't, I wouldn't imagine that, we're not thinking of it as, as like, this'll be, you know, it's over, and we don't have to worry about it anymore, for sure. So, yeah, it wasn't, it was never the plan that we wouldn't follow up with, with the trainer. I, you know, the difficulty has really been to find one that works, you know, that we can, that's improving things. I mean, so Paige had been working with the trainer, and they'd been emphasizing things like reliable recall, where you can, and so I think that's less of an, that's not an issue anymore with the dog on a leash all the time. So, but anyway, yeah. Hope that's okay.
Yeah, this condition talks about a three-foot leash, which is, which is pretty short. So, okay. Thanks very much.
Okay.
Any more?
Well, let us go through the board.
Yep.
When the dog is walked, does the dog have a muzzle on?
Yeah, of course. I mean, currently, yeah. Before, we didn't go out with the muzzle, obviously. Or this would have been avoided, but...
Yeah. Sir, are you in accord with accepting recommendations one through five?
I think, but I think Jeremy said that was...
Okay. So what your lawyer said, you are comfortable with?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from the board?
I'd like to ask you the same question I asked earlier. Why was the dog off-leash at the time of this incident, considering that it had a history of biting problems before that?
Yeah. So I think that earlier, I guess we thought that the earlier incident was fairly unique, and it had been quite a long, it had been a while since it had happened. And I think we just thought, given the difference in the circum, you know, the other, we had been traveling, we were in a strange house, you know, the dog had sort of gotten out of the house unexpectedly. And so we thought it was a different sort of situation, or not. I mean, we let them out, but that, that, the yard wasn't a fenced-in yard. And so, yeah. So I think we just thought circumstances had changed, and things were improving. And we'd been building skills with the trainer that we'd been seeing. So, you know, it was a mistake.
Are there any other questions from the board? For the sake of clarity on process, we're going to hear from every, everyone first. And then if there are any follow-up or anything at the, after we've heard from everyone, then we can do that. And as I mentioned earlier, any questions that anyone wishes to ask to someone else who has spoken, I would ask that they be directed to the board, and the board can then decide how they wish to address those follow-ups. Is there anyone else that would like to speak from the dog owners' side?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
I think Mr. Edditt covered it. Thank you.
In that case, I would first ask the board if there, if the board has any follow-up questions for anyone, from anyone that we've heard from at this point. In that case, if, is there anyone that would like to ask any follow-up questions, or make any follow-up statements to the board? Sir, if you could just come to the mic again. And again, just say your name for the record.
Phil, Phil Conkle. Can I ask the board to request the owner to describe the fence around the pool, the height, the construction, so we can get an idea of how secure it actually is?
Thank you. And then I would defer to the board, if the board has any follow-up questions for anyone that we've heard from.
No, we'd like to hear the answer to that question.
Sorry, I'm, so answering the question about the fence. Yeah. So it's a, the fence is a, I'm not sure exactly how high it is, but I would, I would, and it may vary depending on the ground. But it's, it's a stockade fence, approximately six foot high, with a wire mesh. And, you know, at this point, you know, Winston has been out many, many times, and has, hasn't gotten out. So, or even tried to, as far as that goes.
When you say he's been out, you mean out in the yard?
Yeah. I mean, he's been living in our house, and been out in the yard many times. And, yeah, you want to?
Is he out there alone, or is someone from the family out there with him?
Currently, someone is, is either sort of in, either with him, or, you know, in contact with him.
I don't understand in contact with him.
Well, so, our own, in our own backyard, that's fenced in with a, with a padlock on the gate, we would, we have a room that faces, we're either on the, on the deck overlooking, or sometimes we're in the porch that also overlooks the backyard property. But we don't like just generally leave him out. I mean, he doesn't particularly care for that any either. So he's not one of these dogs that likes being out all day long.
So I'm understanding you've got a fence around the entire perimeter of your property, not just the pool area. Is that...
No, it's, it's around, it's only the pool air, I mean, it's the backyard. So it's, it's around the, the area in the backyard that has the pool. The front yard doesn't have a fence.
And, and how, how large is that space?
It's a little bigger than this room.
Okay. Because this, when you're saying you're agreeing to these conditions, this is a very specific condition.
Okay.
It says it's got to be securely enclosed, confined outdoors, in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run area upon the premises of the owner, provided further that such pen or dog run shall have a secure roof. And if such enclosure has no floor secured to the sides thereof, the sides shall be embedded in the ground by not less than two feet. And also a doghouse or proper shelter is supposed to be provided. So I'm understanding you're basically, you're basically okay with a condition that would require you keep the dog either in your house or in your backyard that's surrounded by this stockade fence.
Right.
But you're not saying you're going to build a dog pen that has a fence embedded two feet in the ground and a roof on it?
Sorry? Yeah. I wasn't, I didn't realize I was agreeing to that. So, yeah, I'm, I don't, that wasn't part of, I think our plan is to not have major renovations on our, on our backyard. But, yeah, you want to say something, Jeremy?
Just clarify something. In that prong number two, what it says is, shall be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog provided, however, and it goes on to find what confined means. And, which is confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run area upon the premises. So that's such pen or dog run area. So the only, the requirement is if the dog is going to be outside, that it would have to have some safe, some protection. It doesn't need a full Doesn't need a full roof, it would just need some protection from the elements if it's outside. But a dog run area in locked pen, that is the fenced-in area. That pen is this fenced-in area. And it's been my experience that you don't put a fenced-in area inside a fenced-in area. A lot of people don't have a fence yet, so they already have the fence. And the only way to get into this yard, it sounds like, is through the house.
Currently, that's correct.
Okay.
Other questions from the board? And other questions from any member of the audience? Yes, sir?
I would, Phil Conkle, I would like to request that the board have the animal control officer inspect the fencing. I don't feel the owner is giving you an accurate description of the enclosure that actually exists. It's fully viewable if you drove by the property. Because they live on Arlington Street, it's, it's easy to see the pool and another structure that they have or some sort of a fenced-in structure. I, I'm asking the board to have the animal control officer inspect the enclosure.
And Mr. Conkle, before you said, if I could ask a follow-up question, what is your, how would you describe the area as you've seen it?
The pool has a fence around it that's in poor condition. There's another, some sort of another enclosure next to the pool that is small. I question whether the enclosure around the pool is adequate. It seems, what's the word, cobbled together.
Does any member of the board have any follow-up questions? With no follow-up questions, unless there, are there any other factual statements that anyone wishes to make? At the next step is that we would close the hearing, at which point we will take no additional factual information. We'll proceed to legal information about what the board is deciding and then the board will actually deliberate. Seeing no, no one wishing to make any further statements, I would defer to the board for the process to close the hearing.
Is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. The hearing is closed.
At this, at this point, we'll proceed. I will briefly try to summarize the legal standards that the board will be deciding as has come up through the course of the hearing. There are details in the statute and I'm happy to answer any questions to the extent that those arise. The board will be taking two votes. First, if Winston is a dangerous dog, a nuisance dog, or neither. And second, if Winston is either a dangerous dog or a nuisance dog, then the second vote will be to determine the appropriate remedy, which we have also discussed in this hearing. In order to find that Winston is a dangerous dog, the board must find that Winston either, without justification, attacked a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death, or behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic or owned animal. That's the definition of a dangerous dog provided in statute. In order to provide that Winston is a nuisance dog, statute provides that the board would have to find that Winston, a nuisance dog is defined as one that by excessive barking or other disturbance is a source of annoyance to a sick person residing in the vicinity or by excessive barking causing damage or other interference, a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment. Or, three, has threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal, or a person, but such threat or attack was not grossly disproportionate reaction under all of the circumstances. So those are the definitions.
I'll move that we find that Winston is a dangerous dog.
Is there a second? Should they second this, any further discussion?
No, there's no discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second vote for the board is to determine what the appropriate remedy is. We've obviously discussed those. Statute provides that there are seven. In general terms, again, without getting into the specifics, those are a humane restraint, confinement on, in or on the owner's property, a muzzle and restraint whenever off the owner's property, proof of insurance for at least $100,000, identifying information that will endure throughout the dog's life or providing such information, spain or neutering if medically appropriate and/or up to humane euthanasia. The, the board must, because of the finding a dangerous dog, choose at least one of those and may impose any combination of those remedies. I'll defer to the board for deliberation.
Yeah, I, I would, I would move that we include restrictions one through five inclusive at this point, plus that no one under the age of eighteen be permitted to be responsible for taking care of the dog, a walking said dog. I would also move that the restraint area, the fenced area, should be examined by the animal control officer or another qualified individual, determine if the existing fence is sufficient.
Second, is there a second?
Can I just clarify a question? I'm sorry, the first part?
Mike, Mike?
The first part, Dean, was that, was that, did, could you repeat the first part of your motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I would move that the, that the board vote to approve sections one through five of the document we've been given regarding conditions of restraint. And also that we agree to the unnumbered section regarding an age restriction, no one under eighteen to be permitted to be responsible for the dog. And further, that the fenced area be examined by the animal control officer or other qualified individual to determine if it's sufficient.
Second? Okay, motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Peter?
Yeah, I, this may be inferred in the motion, but I would, if it's not, make a, suggest a friendly amendment under number two, where Dean is saying the motion is that the animal control officer examine the fencing and determine that it's secure to keep the dog restrained within it. That if it is not, the dog either be restrained indoors or the owner construct an adequate fence.
I'd, I'd accept that.
Okay. I gotta say that I am concerned about this incident happening. I mean, I, I don't believe people ought to be in fear when they're walking on conservation land. It seems to me that the owner was aware of the dog's propensity for this kind of behavior. I'm assuming that Boxborough has similar bylaw that, as acting, that requires the keeper, to keep the dog under complete and effective control by means of a leash or otherwise. We had long debates about this bylaw. Lot of concern about, from dog owners about not requiring that they be always on leashes. So we, we did have this language that says, by means of a leash or otherwise, which is basically voice control. This dog was not under voice control. The owner was aware of that and that's the reason this incident happened. I understand the owner's contrition now afterwards, but can't excuse the fact that the owner was negligent in allowing this to happen in the first place.
Any other discussion?
If I could add one thing regarding the nature of the fencing of the second condition, any violation or any non-compliance with the terms that the board, with the remedies that the board decides essentially becomes a burden upon the dog owner, that that enforcement under section H of the statute provides that any violation of what is ordered by the board can result in the dog immediately being quarantined again. And the owner would have to petition to retrieve, have the dog released. So to the extent that there are concerns about the nature of the structures, that is somewhat remedied by the fact that at any time, if the owner is found to be in violation, there is an automatic remedy of sorts available to the appropriate authorities built into the statute.
It's, is it my understanding that the dog will be at this facility for three weeks? And in the meantime, the fence will be inspected? If it's not appropriate, what happens then?
So the fence inspection is not explicitly provided for as one of the remedies, is, is not provided by statute as one of the explicit remedies. And the remedy itself is that the dog must be, must not be permitted in an unsecure place according to the statute. So if the fence was found not to be legitimate, not to be sufficient, that could be brought to the attention of the owners. But the trigger for taking the dog, for taking the dog away from the owner would only occur if the dog was in fact in that space? Does that make sense? That if the dog is in New Hampshire for three weeks and the fence is not sufficient, then that is not itself a violation of this particular subsection? That the violation occurs when the dog is actually in the insufficiently secured space?
So once the dog is through with this training and comes back to the house, if we know that the fence is not appropriate, what happens then?
The dog would not be permitted to be in that spa, in that fenced space. And if it was discovered in that fenced space that was deemed inappropriate, then it would be taken, taken into quarantine.
Yeah, I, I think I, assuming Lisa got the motion down correctly, I tried to word it so that if the fence is not adequate, if, if the animal control officer finds the fence isn't adequate and the owner doesn't install a fence that is adequate, the dog has to be confined indoors when it's on the property.
Or, or can be up there with a muzzle and leash, just like it would be in a person, just like it would be on a regular bylaw. So it's possible to see the dog in there, but it would have a muzzle and a leash on it?
I, I think I agree with that, yeah. It'd just be like walking the dog, which we're allowing with a, with a three-foot leash and a muzzle. And I, and I do gotta say, I, I agree that we shouldn't have a condition that the dog should be euthanized if it, if it bites someone again. There ought to be some kind of a hearing. It will be automatically quarantined again. God forbid that happens. But we do have the authority to order a dog to be euthanized. And if it happens again, I'm sure the board will consider exercising that authority.
Okay, so we have a motion as amended. David?
May I ask you one more, more quick question? So I assume, Dean, in this motion, that you're, in addition to Peter's friendly amendment, they were recommending the full text of item two, which is the, which is the confining on the property. Which, and my reading of that is a little bit different than their attorney's reading. I mean, I, I understand completely that the cover is for the dog's protection. But the, the putting the fence two feet into the ground or having, you know, is, is for the public's protection. So I, I believe that we should just keep that text there. And then if that is, if the dog's discovered it in inadequate area, that it can be taken back in, they have to surrender it again? That's correct.
Okay, motion made and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So next steps?
The board will issue written findings. And, and any of the documents that were presented today will be made part of the record. I believe when the written findings are, the written findings will be provided to all the parties. And when that's done, that will essentially become the effective date of this, of this ruling, of this decision.
Take it you will prepare the written findings in the order.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Is there any other business before the board? Then I ask for a motion to a chair.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you very much.